All right. Let me call this council meeting to order. Thank you all for coming. Standing room only. This is interesting. Very good. Press and public are duly notified, certainly by the presence here this evening. Thank you all for being here. I'm going to ask everybody to please rise for an invocation and a pledge of allegiance. Let us bow our heads. O heavenly Father, we ask that you look over our city, its citizens, our visitors, as we enter the heart of the hurricane season. Help us, O Lord, to keep ever mindful that we live on your fragile earth in a place we call home. We thank you for our families and friends who visit us at this time of year, watch over them as they return home. We pray for your guidance tonight as we conduct the city's business. Dear Lord, please keep ever safe all those in public service. We cherish them all. For it is your name we pray. Amen. Pledge your allegiance through the flag of the United States of America in two thousand and five hundred, for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. Marie, please call the roll.
Councilmember Bergmark?
Here.
Councilmember Kelly?
Here.
Councilmember Carroll?
Here.
Councilmember Loren?
Here.
Councilmember Harrington?
Here.
Councilmember Kinggulman?
Here.
Councilmember White?
Here.
Councilmember Ward?
Here.
Mayor Cronin?
Present.
Administrator Tucker?
Here.
Administrator Howard?
Here.
Phew. We're playing musical chairs. You might have figured that out moving around. This is our third stop this evening. Let's get on to the Journal of Previous Meetings. You have in your package a regular meeting of June 20th and special meeting of July 6th. I'm going to make a motion that we approve them.
Second.
Second. Any deletions, corrections? None heard? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Carrie's. Now we're up to the festive time of day. Appointment of administration of oath of new employees. We have a cadre of new employees to be sworn in this evening. I'd like to make a motion, do we accept those on your register here today as employees of the city?
Second.
Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So I'm going to call you one by one. We're going to stand out here in front of... Where are you going?
I...
Ooh.
Marie, you'll make that again? Go with the... But it's full of shelves. Bookshelf.
I bet there's an app for that.
Yeah.
There actually is. There is an online app with these put our hands on.
While she's off getting that sorted out, I'll just fill you in on a couple of other things that are going on on the island, just to keep the agenda moving forward. As you know, and we will discuss it later, the city has put in place a city-sponsored event position for a farmer's market. Farmer's market group of citizens have come forward, studied their last series of months, and have come forward, made a proposal, and the farmer's market on the Isle of Poms will commence on August 31st and will be in the county park. The county park is going to be used as a site for the farmer's market, although parking for citizens and residents of the island will be available free of charge at our municipal lot. Across the street, we'll have the county park. There'll be obviously farmers, produce, and other items. There'll be arts and crafts. And this event will also feature some music. I don't know who's going to be playing, but there'll be some music for your entertainment. So even if you don't want to buy any arts and crafts or buy a cucumber or whatever, you can at least sit and listen to the music that's being played. So I compliment Louis Gregory and his team of volunteers that have spent time and energy to volunteer to put this together, and hopefully everybody can come out and enjoy the time. It'll be four to seven at the county park, as I said before, starting on August 31st, and will go on through September through October, as long as the light holds and interest is there. So every Thursday, put it on your calendar. We also approved the fundraiser to be sponsored as a city-sponsored event for SEAL Kids. This is a program where fundraiser to help children of SEALs in various ways and forms. It's going to be a swimming exhibition or race or contest, or whatever you want to say, leaving from the beach not too far from the Windjammer. They're going to have a course out there, and there'll be ample security measures and protection for somebody that gets in difficulty in the water, like Jimmy might. Might. He's got his swimmies. And then in the evening, the Windjammer's going to host a concert, again, part of the fundraiser. So it's expected to be a very good event, and it's a first of a kind, and this is for SEAL Kids, SEALs of course, of the Navy variety.
Right.
And I was touched when they said they chose to do it on September 9th. They wanted to make it as close to September 11th as they could, and that's perfect. You also know that Channel Five... No, Charleston, I said Channel Five. I wrote down Charleston. The fifth year in a row, we've been awarded the number one position in Travel and Leisure Magazine, and I'm certain we're a part of that as we go forward. So accomplishments for the greater Charleston area for the fifth year in a row. So now that we have a Bible that's arrived, are you giving me some of your...
Yeah, I'm giving you that. You're adding a new BSO there.
All right. Take it all.
Thanks.
So as I call you, please come forward. We'll swear you in.
Hang on to your...
Nicole Morris, why don't you come up now while we're walking down here? Stand over here. Nicole is the newest member of our building department doing our licensing and permitting. I think you're going to see this way. All you have to do is repeat after me. I...
I'm more...
Do solemnly swear that I'm duly qualified...
Do solemnly swear that I'm duly qualified.
According to the ordinance of the City of Isle of Poms...
According to the ordinance of the City of Isle of Poms.
To perform the duties of the position...
To perform the duties of the position.
To which I have been selected.
To which I have been selected.
And that I will...
And that I will.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
Discharge the duties thereof.
Discharge the duties thereof.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Excellent. You're done. Excellent. You have two daughters. One's from Virginia. Well, that's very good. I was going to make an Ohio copy. We did that earlier. So welcome to the team. I know Douglas will take care of you very well. See you very...
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Stephanie Tucker. You're not related to... I...
I, Stephanie Tucker.
Do solemnly swear...
Right, right.
Do solemnly swear...
That I'm duly qualified...
That I'm duly qualified.
According to the ordinance of the City of Isle of Poms.
According to the ordinance of the City of Isle of Poms.
To perform the duties of the position...
To perform the duties of the position.
To which I have been selected.
To which I have been selected.
And that I will...
And that I will.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
Discharge the duties thereof.
Discharge the duties thereof.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Welcome. Stephanie's finished the academy and previously worked as a dispatcher. I don't remember your voice. I listen to the radio all the time. You dispatching, Ross? Oh, very good. All right. Now you're part of the team here.
Thank you.
All right. Jonathan. All right. By now you've figured out the pool?
Yes, sir.
I...
Hi, Jonathan.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I am duly qualified...
That I am duly qualified.
According to the ordinances...
According to the ordinances.
The City of Isle of Poms.
To perform the duties of the position... To which I have been selected. And that I will... And that I will.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
Discharge the duties thereof.
Discharge the duties thereof.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Welcome. Previously worked in the detention center.
Yes, sir.
I think you'll find this a little... All right. Thank you. Robert. Hiding in the corner, so... Okay, here we go. I, Robert.
I, Robert Forsythe.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I'm duly qualified...
That I'm duly qualified.
According to the ordinance of the City of Isle of Poms.
According to the ordinance of the City of Isle of Poms.
To perform the duties of the position...
To perform the duties of the position.
To which I have been selected.
To which I have been selected.
And that I will...
And that I will.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
Discharge the duties thereof.
Discharge the duties thereof.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Welcome. Excellent. You've been working for public safety in Charleston Police as well as the MLC.
Yes, sir.
And you're well experienced.
I will hear so.
Thomas. All right. I...
I, Thomas 2030.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I am duly qualified...
That I am duly qualified.
According to the ordinance of the City of Isle of Poms.
According to the ordinance of the City of Isle of Poms.
To perform the duties of the position...
To perform the duties of the position.
To which I have been selected.
To which I have been selected.
And that I will...
And that I will.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
Discharge the duties thereof.
Discharge the duties thereof.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Welcome. I almost scared Thomas away over the weekend. He saw me on my bicycle.
Did you give him a ticket?
I can assure you, I don't go that fast. It's hard for me to stand up. Robert. Robert, here you go. And I... I, Robert Boss.
I, Robert Boss.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I am duly qualified...
That I am duly qualified.
According to the ordinances...
According to the ordinances.
The City of Isle of Poms.
To the City of Isle of Poms.
To perform the duties...
To perform the duties of the position.
To which I have been selected.
To which I have been selected.
And that I will...
And that I will.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
Discharge the duties thereof.
Discharge the duties thereof.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Welcome to the team. Previously worked in the detention center.
Yes, sir.
I think you'll find this a little... All right. Thank you. Robert. Hiding in the corner, so... Okay, here we go. I, Robert.
I, Robert Forsythe.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I'm duly qualified...
That I'm duly qualified.
According to the ordinances...
According to the ordinances.
The City of Isle of Poms.
The City of Isle of Poms.
To perform the duties of the position...
To perform the duties of the position.
To which I have been selected.
To which I have been selected.
And that I will...
And that I will.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
Discharge the duties thereof.
Discharge the duties thereof.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Welcome. I almost scared Thomas away over the weekend. He saw me on my bicycle.
Did you give him a ticket?
I can assure you, I don't go that fast. It's hard for me to stand up. Robert. Robert, here you go. And I... I, Robert Boss.
I, Robert Boss.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I am duly qualified...
That I am duly qualified.
According to the ordinances...
According to the ordinances.
The City of Isle of Poms.
The City of Isle of Poms.
To perform the duties of the position...
To perform the duties of the position.
To which I have been selected.
To which I have been selected.
And that I will...
And that I will.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
Discharge the duties thereof.
Discharge the duties thereof.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Excellent. Welcome. One of our communications personnel. You were in the Marine Corps for four years.
Any word for the rank? Yes, that's why his face is familiar.
That's where...
That's right.
All right. Thank you very much. Where's Ross Graves? There you go. Step on. I...
I, Ross Graves.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I am duly qualified...
That I am duly qualified.
According to the ordinances...
According to the ordinances.
The City of Isle of Poms.
The City of Isle of Poms.
To perform the duties of the position...
To perform the duties of the position.
To which I have been selected.
To which I have been selected.
And that I will...
And that I will.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
Discharge the duties thereof.
Discharge the duties thereof.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Welcome. I almost scared Thomas away over the weekend. He saw me on my bicycle.
Did you give him a ticket?
I can assure you, I don't go that fast. It's hard for me to stand up. Robert. Robert, here you go. And I... I, Robert Boss.
I, Robert Boss.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I am duly qualified...
That I am duly qualified.
According to the ordinances...
According to the ordinances.
The City of Isle of Poms.
The City of Isle of Poms.
To perform the duties of the position...
To perform the duties of the position.
To which I have been selected.
To which I have been selected.
And that I will...
And that I will.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
Discharge the duties thereof.
Discharge the duties thereof.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Excellent. Welcome. One of our communications personnel. You were in the Marine Corps for four years.
Any word for the rank? Yes, that's why his face is familiar.
That's where...
That's right.
All right. Thank you very much. Where's Ross Graves? There you go. Step on. I...
I, Ross Graves.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I am duly qualified...
That I am duly qualified.
According to the ordinances...
According to the ordinances.
The City of Isle of Poms.
The City of Isle of Poms.
To perform the duties of the position...
To perform the duties of the position.
To which I have been selected.
To which I have been selected.
And that I will...
And that I will.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
Discharge the duties thereof.
Discharge the duties thereof.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Excellent. Welcome. One of our communications personnel. You were in the Marine Corps for four years.
Any word for the rank? Yes, that's why his face is familiar.
That's where...
That's right.
All right. Thank you very much. Where's Ross Graves? There you go. Step on. I...
I, Ross Graves.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I am duly qualified...
That I am duly qualified.
According to the ordinances...
According to the ordinances.
The City of Isle of Poms.
The City of Isle of Poms.
To perform the duties...
To perform the duties.
Of the position...
Of the position.
To which I have been selected.
To which I have been selected.
And that I will...
And that I will.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
Discharge the duties thereof.
Discharge the duties thereof.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Welcome. You come to us from Goose Creek, Rio Grande Fire?
Yes, sir.
Fire 42?
Yes, sir.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Josh?
Do you have a BSO? BSO.
You ready for this?
Yes, sir.
All right. I...
I, Josh Bell.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I am duly qualified...
That I am duly qualified.
According to the ordinances...
According to the ordinances.
The City of Isle of Poms.
The City of Isle of Poms.
To perform the duties...
To perform the duties.
Of the position...
Of the position.
To which I have been selected.
To which I have been selected.
And that I will...
And that I will.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
Discharge the duties thereof.
Discharge the duties thereof.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Welcome. This is the largest cadre of new personnel we've hired in the city in quite a while, and I hope you can... You're following in great footsteps. We always have and still have some of the finest personnel in all departments, so...
Thank you.
We're looking forward to a lot of work out of you, frankly. But make work fun, you know? Enjoy it, and don't let them get you down. I'm looking at the officers here. Some of these tourists can get a little antsy. So no other swearing ins. I'll stay in citizens' comments, and those officers who want to leave can leave, and we'll just ask any other citizens I wish to address council to come forward.
They don't know where they're going. You can go. Dismissed.
It's been painful enough, I know.
Randy Bell.
All right. Please.
Yeah, I usually leave this off, so I might as well leave it off again. Did I have to move my right hand up?
Hi, Randy Bell.
Hi, Linda.
Chris just confirmed that you know the right from the left.
Yeah, yeah. I'm working on it still. Randy Bell, 2241st Avenue. I wanted to take the time tonight. There's been a lot of... For those of you that follow social media, and I'm new to it, I might add, a lot of chatter about the Marina and the referendum, and I really think it's our responsibility to understand what got us to where we are and the financials behind it, so I'm going to take some time to hopefully educate some, raise some concerns to council that I have as we look to the referendum. I want to state, I'm not against having a referendum. I'm really in favor of citizens understanding what the referendum means, how we'll finance the Marina, and if it's in the best interest of the community. So having said that, I think from a historical perspective, we should ask, has the city realized any income from the lease dollar thresholds that are in the current leases? So I've gone through each of these leases I got from Linda recently and tried to understand to the best of my ability, so if I make any mistakes in my numbers or my quotes, I'm happy to be corrected. Two elements of the leases. One is gross profit, and gross profit is revenues less cost of goods sold. There's another element, which is gross income, which is a lot simpler. It's just revenues in irregardless of the expenses underlying that. And I think those are important because during the tenure of these leases, those terms have changed in some of those leases. So from 2009 to '14, Marina Joint Ventures, which operates the boat launch portion of the Marina, had lease terms based on rent of $150,000, with additional amounts due to the city when gross profit exceeds $450,000. The Outpost, which is the retail portion, had from 2008 to 2012, $60,000 per year with 2% of gross income above $500,000 but less than $1 million, and it went to 3% above $1 million. In 2012, that was amended to 2% of gross profit, so that's a huge change going from gross income to gross profit. And since I don't know what the revenues were, I have no idea of what it meant to the city, but I think it's important to note. So I'll ask the council, not for an answer tonight, but I'd like to know what additional income was realized during this period of time. So we have lease terms that dictate threshold, but personally, I don't know, because I really... Trying to go through those financials is very, very painful. In 2015, the Marina Joint Ventures and Marina Outpost leases were extended without public debt for 30 additional years till 2045. So I'm pretty sure I'm not going to be here to see what the conclusion of that looks like, but you never know. I might be sitting in a corner somewhere. I personally have an issue with a 30-year lease. I just... I've been a business executive for a lot of years. I've never seen anything like it. So I've mentioned it before to council. I find it... Frankly, I find it irresponsible. So we'll now receive 2% of gross profit greater than $750,000 from the Marina outpost
...ninety-nine by the former anchors that operated the marina. So we have an incredibly favorable term, assuming we don't hit the threshold. So the council has continued to offset marina expense for the last ten years. It had an average of about five hundred thousand dollars a year from the general funds. General fund money is earmarked for tourist-specific expenditures. I don't think offsetting marina lease expenses and other things in my mind fall into that category, but that's for legal and accounting to determine. I have an issue with it personally. So we now have a pending referendum based on lease terms that I think we should worry about, and I think a pretty uncertain fiscal funding path for a number of years. And all I'm asking is, when you look at this as citizens, and I hope other people look at the council minutes and all, take the time to understand what it means and vote accordingly. I mean, that's, I'm not going to tell people how to vote. I can tell you, I have a huge concern, you know, I just am very, very troubled by this. The marina was purchased by ordinance to provide IOP residents access to the water. That's publicly available information. I would like for council to publish and provide the data on the percentage of use by our citizens. We're now told, if true, again, social media context, right, that no more annual launch passes to residents are to be granted this year due to parking concerns, even though citizen launch passes are specifically written into the lease terms. Right? So you can't pick and choose which terms we like and don't like. To me, the continued commercialization of this city marina for primary purposes of non-residents and commercial interest is unacceptable. And I can tell you, the people that live around me do not find it acceptable. I don't blame the marina operators and the tenants. They can only act within the boundaries that we give them. But I think as we look towards this referendum, again, everyone that took the time to come to the meeting, I would pay particular attention to what's in the referendum and ask council to provide very specific details on the funding plans and also the historical, have we actually collected any of these threshold revenues? Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address?
I think Philip Smith wanted to speak.
Oh, there he is. Hello.
You look relaxed. You look relaxed.
Sure, if you've got handouts.
He's a peace guy. I got some handouts. How about that?
Thank you, Philip.
Thank you. There's some bullet points what I'm going to discuss with a few pictures of my life and my vacation.
Why don't you just start and I'll pass the rest out?
I keep talking with me in my open so I can get all my cheat notes.
Thank you.
My name is Philip Smith. I live in number eight, Intercoastal Court. Everybody here probably knows me. I'm here to discuss the marina also. Have some, some points of matter that are really disrupting to me. I've been coming to these meetings and trying to discuss them with everybody to get them out in the open so we could hopefully head in a good direction. As you know, that there's a large business, jet ski business located right next to my house, borders the residential property. It's a nuisance to me. It's, uh, it's, it's been a nuisance and I've been arguing with the town and pleading with the town since two thousand and twelve about it. And here we are in two thousand and seventeen. And even if the referendum passes, when's this going to maybe take place? Two thousand and twenty-two? So we're talking about ten years to, to deal with a problem? I mean, by the time the work's done out there at the marina, by the time there's referendum, money, rebonding, I mean, I'm in a construction business. I know how long things take, you know? And get to everybody to agree. I mean, the marina was permitted under a GC1 special exemption because there's no place in, in the zoning to put it. So it was done under special exemption, which requires that adequate provision be made to protect adjacent residential properties from a nuisance in special exemptions. Okay? Now, since it was permitted so long ago, we do not have record of the special exemptions in our file, what they were. But under special exemptions through GC1, there are supposed to be proper buffers and residential, adjacent residential properties. And there isn't. They're forty feet away from my house and there's, as you know, sixteen jet skis and sometimes fifty to seventy-five people out there. And that's not what I consider a proper buffer. The city earns fifty dollars a day on that lease. Equals fifteen hundred dollars a month. Fifty dollars a day is what you guys collect from them. Y'all know that. I'm sure everybody's read the lease. The best I can tell, they've never paid the twenty percent surplus on the payment after the gross revenue of three hundred thousand dollars. Best I can tell because I asked for records and none of it showed it. In one hour, the water sports company can pay the entire month's rent in one hour of what they bring in. Can pay for the month. I would have loved on that business. I would. If I could pay my rent in one hour of business and the rest of the time I was making money, I'd be a pretty happy business owner. The lease, after fifteen years of being a year-to-year lease, is now a three-term, five-year lease with a one-year cancellation notice. So, two years ago, the town decided to give them a five-year lease with two automatic renewals after that. So basically, they can be here until two thousand and thirty. Knowing that this was an issue, they decided to do it anyway. Beyond my belief, it happened while I wasn't watching, or I would have been raising hell. The lease can be canceled in two thousand and twenty-one with a one-year cancellation notice for two thousand and twenty. So, you know, we got three more years. It appears the city must feel strongly about keeping the water sports business at the marina, even at a loss to the city for revenue. Everybody must really want it there because they're willing to pay them to be there because that's what we're doing. If you add up the repairs in the dock in two thousand and fourteen and the repairs in the dock in two thousand and fifteen, those one hundred and sixty, one hundred and eighty thousand dollars went into repairs of the dock. The city was prepared to spend another three hundred thousand dollars instead of the eighty to build them a bigger structure, a twenty-five-foot by twenty-five-foot pavilion out there at, at the cost of three hundred and some thousand dollars to the, to the residents. They would never get paid back. It wouldn't happen in our lifetime, in the next city council lifetime. So basically, we are paying Title Water Sports to be there. I don't know why, other than you guys really must love them and really want them there. But they're a nuisance to me and nobody's done anything about it. I've complained, I've complained, I've complained, and I've complained. Okay? So if you guys want to make that badly, then you need to take appropriate action and abate the nuisance to, to my property. That's what I'm asking. The lease gives the city the opportunity upon reasonable notice to change the location of the water sports dock, provided the tenant has adequate dock space for the permitted use. The proposed version of the redevelopment plan from the meeting this morning, the real property committee, shows the water sports dock relocated on the docks that Brian and Jay share over there. If the marina, if the marina development plan referendum passes, if it passes, the budget, and the budget allows it, the redevelopment could be four to five years away, in my, in my best estimate, the way things go. I've been attending these meetings since two thousand and twelve and pleading with you guys and to no bait. I can't, I, I can't wait five more years for the city to abate this nuisance. I met with Brian and Jay separately and they have both agreed to work with the city to temporarily relocate Title Water Sports to their shared dock over the winter. In August of two thousand and thirteen, I was successful in the city, getting the city not to spend the three hundred and sixty thousand dollars to rebuild the water dock, the water sports dock at its present location at that time, but to wait until a better plan was formulated to abate the nuisance. Now is a good time to spend some money that the city saved. Now I'm asking the city council to allocate the funds to design, permit, and temporarily relocate the water sports dock this winter to abate the nuisance as quickly as possible. Thank you very much.
Good.
And there's some pictures in there of my everyday life. I think one picture represents a celebration after the five-year lease was signed. I figured out what that was.
Thank you very much. I know we're going to be discussing this. Okay.
Got somebody else by there?
Anyone else, please?
Couple others.
My name is Michael Phim. I am the owner of Title Wave Water Sports. I'm not a good public speaker, so if I stumble on my words, I apologize. I would like to make sure everybody gets a good background of what has gone on over the years. You know, originally, in nineteen ninety-two, Title Wave Water Sports was actually called Title Wave Runners, owned by two guys named Steve and Billy, whom I've never met. In nineteen ninety-six, it was changed to Title Wave Water Sports, and it's always been at the same location. Philip permitted and built his house from ninety-eight, nineteen ninety-eight to two thousand. I'm not sure when he moved in exactly. I do know that the original developer did not want to develop his parcel of land because he, they wanted to create a buffer zone, of which somehow he got that changed and he got the marina, I mean, the property right next to the marina. As he built his house, Title Wave Water Sports was there. In addition, there was a maintenance building there, right next to his house, but he didn't care then. You know, for years, Philip cooked us food, brought it over, when his own daughters worked at our place. And I know that on social media, they said that it's not proper to bring up family members, but they were employed by us. So for years, he didn't care. He actually liked us being there. He would cook on his own green egg and bring it over to us. And he's a, he's a really good cook. You are. You know? And for other reasons, one was let go and one was not. But after that, he didn't like us being there. We were a nuisance. If you look at our financials, we've actually done less business in the last few years than before. We have met the threshold once, and believe you me, if I can meet the threshold more, I would. But I know that, you know, things happen, I can't. And, you know, he says, I, I forget, Linda could probably look it up, that the year that we paid, I think that we paid five thousand additional dollars. Now, to you, Philip, who live in a four million dollar house, that might not be big money to you. But I live in a little fifteen hundred square foot house that didn't cost two hundred thousand dollars.
You're addressing council.
Okay, but I'm just, you know, he says fifteen dollars a day. You know, we bring in so much to the city. There's a reason why Charleston and has been the number one city, city in Travel and Leisure Magazine. There's a reason why it's brought up in council. This is a tourism area, you know? He says that, you know, one hour of business would cover our monthly cost. But, you know, it's very, very untrue. You know, as any business owner knows, there's many, many costs, labor, insurance, rent, and very, and various other expenses, you know? If you looked at, if people looked at our financials, they would see that there's a lot of expenses associated with this business. So just, when you're thinking about this, think about the fact that, you know, the marina, that we were there first. Now, we weren't the owners at the time, but in nineteen ninety-six, our jet, sixteen jet skis were there and parasol boats were there, but he wanted to build anyway. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Please.
I'm Don Thompson from Goat Island and I won't take long. I'm aware of the problems with the, that corner of the marina where the jet skis are and where Philip lives, and I'm sympathetic with both of them. Philip's been a good friend for a long time. The guys at the jet skis have kindly let us put a dumpster there once a year to move white goods and trash, which is something that we really need, that space. We really had difficulties finding it anywhere else on the island, and they've been good enough to let us use it. So I understand the, the problems they have. I think that I've mentioned the problems that we have on Goat Island to you a few times, parking, trash disposal, emergencies. And I forgot to thank the fire department last time I spoke, helping us out, for being great. They've been just great testing. We're, we're working on our fire pump too. Excuse me. But I would like to be able to say that Goat Island could somehow make this work and make everybody happy. We could use some help. I don't, I don't like to see neighbors not helping each other out. And so I'm going to say that we would welcome any discussion, conversation, investigation of possibilities, exploration of a way that Goat Island can fit in to this problem and make it better for everybody. Council, jet skis, Philip, and Goat Island. Thank you.
Thank you, Don. All right, next. Others? Anyone else? Go in, go in, go on. All right, moving on. I'll get my notes. We just had a Ways and Means Committee meeting. I'll, no, let me entertain a mo, I almost, I almost screwed up here. I'm going to entertain a motion to reorder the agenda to take up, Bill's already in possession, second reading of ordinance two thousand and seventeen dash oh five now. I'll make that as a motion. Any discussion? No? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Now, I'm going to make a motion. We go into executive session to hear from our attorneys on this matter, as we have both Ryan and Sterling with us, and I believe at this point, we need to have some legal advice. So I'll make a motion. We go into executive session to hear from our attorneys on this ordinance.
Second.
Motion is seconded. Any discussion? No. And all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We want to go upstairs. We want to leave everyone out here.
We'll move.
We're going to move. You could just stay there. We're going to go upstairs for a second. We'll stay on our feet while we do this so that we can do it with reasonable dispatch. Thank you all for coming back.
Yes, that's it.
I'm going to make a motion to come out of executive session. Second? Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
While we were in executive session, we heard from our attorneys, two in fact, on the subject of ordinance two thousand and seventeen dash oh three, which is before us now since we reordered the agenda.
Well, I had oh five on my agenda. Is it oh five or oh three?
I've got oh three and oh five.
It's oh five.
All right.
Is the wrong number on it?
So, to get discussion started, I'm going to make a motion that we proceed with second reading of ordinance two thousand and seventeen oh five. Spend the reading and second it. All right, discussion. Anybody wish to discuss a consideration of whether we make this an advisory referendum or make it a binding referendum?
I would love to see it go as a binding referendum.
The discussion, of course, is binding referendum. The biggest issue there is twofold. One is it doesn't go against our borrowing capacity and it is consistent with our prior referendum and bond. So both of those are positives in my eyes. Anybody else have comments?
I agree. Then we should make a binding.
I understood that if it was binding, it would limit our flexibility.
No.
Our attorney's right here.
Yeah, that's not accurate?
I, I would just say that, like, the advisory referendum, it, you know, is more, I would say, would give more flexibility in some sense, but I don't think that we're losing that much by, by making it binding. You know, we discussed the constitutional debt limit and that type of thing, so we're not talking about an amount of money that's really over that, but this would give, you know, the city the ability to preserve that amount of money, the five point five million dollars.
So it does create more flexibility if there was a national disaster and we had to go out for substantial additional funding, we'd be limiting ourselves if we keep it as is.
If it's non-binding.
If it's non-binding.
Correct.
Yes.
Which is what we're discussing.
You're limiting yourself as non-binding.
That's a good point. I mean, I would say that your flexibility on the one hand, but the way that you're wording it, then, you know, you could say that gives you more flexibility by not having a council to the debt limit, so.
But you're recommending non-binding. Your, your personal recommendation is non-binding.
I mean, I, I've always recommended that, you know, doing the non-binding advisory referendum would be, you know, give the city the, the most flexibility as far as it goes because the five point five is not within the debt limit. I, you know, I understand the flip side of that when we're talking about preserving that amount of money in the debt limit so that you can, you know, have other projects in the future. And if we think that those are things that, you know, you'd like to save that debt limit for, then, then I think it's a good idea. So I really don't see a downside to it. Probably the simplest thing to do is the advisory referendum, but I do like the consistency of referring to the Municipal Bond Act like we did with the purchase. So, I mean, I, I think that that's a good way to go as well. I don't, I think it's...
So you like both of them?
Yes, that's right. She leads with non-binding.
The idea of doing the binding. I mean, I really don't see a downside to it. You know, I do usually, almost always, like to be consistent with what we've done in the past. For that reason, after really looking at it more, I think, you know, it's probably, that would be the way to go.
Which way?
Go with the binding.
Very clear.
Who's on first?
I know.
Barb?
Well, I, you know, I think there's an underlying thing here that we feel if it's binding and the people vote against it, they're voting against the marina. What the referendum is, is can we borrow money?
Mm-hmm.
Correct? I mean, it's really not a up or down, thumbs up or thumbs down on the marina. And I, I think that needs to be very clear when we, when we set up this referendum.
Well, there's got to be a purpose for borrowing the bonds that we have to state.
Sure.
Yeah.
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, anybody else? Jimmy?
I'd like to make amendment to this ordinance to make it a binding referendum.
Well, you should, you can't do that.
My only suggestion would be that we refer to our bond attorneys to ensure that we have the...
We would have to not take action tonight if we were going to do that. So we have to vote not to do that.
Defer action.
Right.
Defer action.
Right.
And you're going to incur... Now, we have a motion on the, we have a motion on the floor to vote on the draft, which says advisory referendum. So if that fails, we can then take up a consideration of a redraft.
Or you could withdraw it and just defer action and second reading would be on a different version of the ordinance.
We have to vote on what we have.
Well, because you've made the motion, you withdraw the second, withdraw the motion.
But how do we know how the vote is going to go unless we take a vote?
I'm advocating no action for second reading and a deferral of second reading. So what comes before you for second reading will be amended to be the binding language and the proper language for the municipal bond act.
So that's a motion to suspend action tonight and...
Yeah, you got to withdraw your first one.
All right, I'll withdraw the motion.
You need to, you need a second withdrawal.
Well, for clarification, Mayor, is this going to incur, I mean, obviously, we're going to go to get an opinion from the residents, which I think is, is fine. But if it's going to incur, incur more expense to delay this and go through more legal expenses, which I think are unnecessary, I'm not for...
I don't want to diminish it, but it'll only take a couple hours of legal time.
I'll second your motion, Mayor.
Which one is this?
The motion, the motion is to defer action this evening and...
Did we get rid of the other motion?
I don't think so. We have to withdraw the second.
I withdraw my second. I withdraw my second.
Okay, so that motion's no longer on the table.
Okay.
So there's a, we'll make a motion to defer action this evening on second reading and redraft the ordinance to make it a binding referendum.
Second.
Motion is second. Okay, now that's what's on the table. All right. Any more discussion? Everybody understands that? Who's on first? What's on second? All right. All in favor of the motion, please say aye. Raise your hand.
Yeah.
Okay, three, four, five.
This Carol's...
Abs, aye. Sorry.
Okay.
Can I represent Carol?
And all opposed? Please raise your hand. Two opposed. All right. So the, we're taking no action on second reading. It'll be left for legal counsel to come back to us. We will have a special council meeting to deal with this, hopefully before the end of the month. I don't want to get too tight into...
Yes, we have to have a five-day window, right, from the first reading to second reading. Well, and so that we, so that we can get the language of the ordinance out there for the public.
Well, do we have to go back to first reading?
No, I don't think so.
Okay.
I don't think so.
Who's on first? All right, we've dispensed with that. Thank you very much.
I have Ways and Means.
Now, we're up to Ways and Means. I'll report on the meeting we had earlier this evening. So we heard from our treasurer. Let me give a treasurer's report. Our preliminary unaudited statements for the end of June show that the general fund revenue is one hundred and one percent of budget, which is consistent with exactly where we were, excuse me, this time last year. And our general fund expenditures, not at hundred percent, they're running at ninety-five percent, and we expect that to be relatively stable, even though we have some expenses that'll come in yet, yet in the month. On the revenue side, we do expect some revenues to continue to come in, as they always do. Revenues that are attributable to last year that will increase the revenue reported for FY seventeen. Local option sales tax. We have another, the state, I don't want to say contribution, I shouldn't use that. State shared funding has yet to come in. We have one month of property tax. We have the ATAX, state ATAX for the fourth quarter, of which five percent close to the general fund, et cetera. So we will have a positive result over and above the hundred and one percent that we're in right now in general fund expenditures. All of that puts us currently at a cash position in the general fund where we have three point four million dollars in cash, a little bit more, a couple hundred thousand more than we were last year. But on the total cash balance for all of our accounts, not including the stakeholders' funds, which is other people's money, we're sitting right now with seventeen million four, whereas this time last year, we had fourteen million two. So all of our funds are in excess of where we were last year in capital projects, tourism funds, as well as beach preservation, et cetera, the biggest kickers. So those are all good, and we will get further on and figure out how much, how many, how much over budget we will be by the end of next month, maybe, at least, pretty much next month. So we'll have to make some decisions as to what to do with, with those overages. Our tourism funds, our municipal accommodations tax had a healthy month in June, consistent with the prior series of months. So year-to-date, we're running a two percent over budget, excuse me, over last year. We've had nothing from the state. I would expect the state to come in roughly two percent or more. The county's accommodations taxes paid previously. I am frankly concerned, you know, they paid once, so that they paid without knowing what their total receipts were. So I'm concerned that they're going to come back and ask for credit or, I mean, you know, these guys, they scare me at times when they go through some of that stuff. But as somebody pointed out in Ways and Means, that the island is certainly eating and drinking its way because our hospitality tax, we have twenty-nine payers exceeded ninety-two thousand dollars, which makes the year-to-date performance up seven percent for the, for the entire year with one month to go. So that's all good. And our beach preservation fee is consistent with our accommodations tax at running at two percent over, over budget and over, over prior year, excuse me, I keep saying budget. Why do we think we're in budget cycle? Our projects, the washdown project, we're going to talk about here in a second. We have a change notice, but it's proceeding into, obviously, this fiscal year, and hopefully the change notice, change orders don't come fast and furious anymore. Our coastal science and engineering, we had limited activity, and we have put up on the website now, the RFP is out.
Request for bids.
RFB, okay. RFB is out for the appropriate providers to, to respond to. We have a pre-bid meeting of all those interested on August first, and hopefully we get numerous bidders with, who are anxious to participate in our business. Let's hope.
SCNG revenues?
Well, I'm not talking about SCNG, but I'm going to hold off on the drainage project till later. Our South Carolina electric and gas revenues, they provide us a receipt of revenues once a year, and their report is that the revenues from accounts on this island were down. So we're not heating and air conditioning ourselves as well as we did in the past. It could be because natural weather conditions are more environmentally responsive, new homes going up and don't take as much energy, whatever. The revenue was down for the first time ever. It's typically always gone up because the rates have always gone up. The rates went up and our revenue went down, so we'll see what transpires in that in the future years. It's a pretty rigorous exercise. There's no way, I mean, there's no way that accounting can be wrong because they know the accounts, and they all accumulate, so we can't accuse them of fooling around with our money. We can't, I guess we... We proceeded on to deal with the recommendation from our ATAX committee to approve an advertising sponsorship for $1,000 for the Carolina Coastal Surf Club, and I'll make that a motion here at council.
Second.
And seconded. This is consistent with what we have done in the past, and Surf Club gets adequate hits on their website where we're properly advertised, and they do good service for the city. So it's a feel-good effort. So all in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. We went on to approve ATAX over-budget expenditures. I'll make one motion to approve the beach trash removal excess of $6,019, the thermal imaging camera excess of $215,000, and the Easter egg hunt excess of $12. Motion and seconded.
You don't want to discuss that $12 now.
It's a travesty.
It's a travesty.
A travesty, I tell you. Oh, Norma Jean. Too much candy. All right, all in favor of the motion, please say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. Assignment of Series 2008 Geo Bond for the Public Safety Building, we heard from our attorney, and this is an assignment that we're going to make. They have sold, BB&amp;T has sold our bond to Sterling, is that the name?
Sterling National.
Sterling National Bank, and we will be proceeding with the documentation to have that adequately assigned. And the cost that we incur for doing that will be borne by BB&amp;T, which is good. All right, we're now up to drainage improvement. Drainage bids were taken for the drainage improvement project for 45th to 52nd Avenue. I don't tend to, it's somewhere around here.
And no action is required at this time, only to report that all of the bids, even the low bidder, the lowest bidder, was, were in excess of what our estimates had been for construction, and so we're working on closing the gap before we award that contract, and we have a planned method for closing that gap, which includes some participation by Charleston County, additional participation with TST funds, and also the utilization of some fund balance. So once we have that gap closed, we will be making a recommendation for award of contract.
We received four bids, all, as Linda said, were over budget. The low bidder is IPW Construction Group, to which we were proceeding, and hopefully can move towards an award later after the funding is fully secured, so. So. Bidding, we rebid the professional services related to the removal and replacement of underground storage tanks. We received a bid, again, I lost my pages, the name...
It was from Summit.
From Summit, engineering which...
737, right?
For $21,737. Thank you, Carol, for the professional services to be our, basically, our project manager as we contract and execute the storage tank removal and replacement. So I'll make that as a motion?
Second.
Seconded. Discussion, none opposed. All in favor of the motion, please say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that's taken care of. We consider the accounting software. We had been deliberating for quite a while. I say "we," that's the royal "we." Debbie and the staff, Linda and every department head have been playing with, trying to figure out what's the best accounting software we can migrate to. Serves all of our various purposes from the various departments. And the recommendation from staff is to award a contract to BSNA. I'll make that as a motion?
Second.
And seconded. BSNA was the most complete in their offering as far as being able to provide the services on-site, software modules, and I'd say warm and fuzzy, if nothing else, through their demonstrations and their personal interaction with everybody, so. We have a motion and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. We mentioned, as we had earlier, the farmer's market where staff has been meeting with our volunteers to go through all of that detail, and again, on August 31st, at 4:00, I expect to count noses, you know. And bring your own bag, not plastic.
Harris Teeters.
Harris Teeters bring your bag.
And they'll bring the bags.
You can bring one, too.
Yeah, you can bring your own. We have them in the car.
4:00, is that what you said?
4:00, 4 to 7 is the stated hour, and hopefully the weather will permit, and we'll have a festive time. The music will be bold and whatever.
But not disturb the neighbors. I do want to make one point that I did not make at Ways and Means, and that is that the structure calls for us suspending the payment of parking in the city's lots from 4 to 7 on those Thursdays. So we will have a slight loss of revenue likely as a result of accommodating parking for the farmer's market.
Residents park free anyhow, so it's, we're only losing revenue from somebody who wants to go to the beach at 4:00 or after.
Right.
It'd be very little.
Yes.
I don't suspect much.
Just wanted to make sure I alerted you all to that.
Do we have to do anything?
No, I don't think so. I don't think we have to.
Just you want me to mention that there's a page on the website with more information under the island?
Okay.
Yes, so go to the island.
Including applications and everything else. But if you need anything from us, we can take that up at one of our special meetings we keep talking about. We have a change order from Public Works dealing with the washdown and the amount of $21,000 and some change.
$21,401.
Thank you, Mayor.
Make that as a motion?
Second.
Change order number five.
Change order number five. Motioned and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Any... Against, all right, motion carries. We're reporting under Chapter 20, an award of a contract to Fire Penny for 1 CTE 55 horsepower. So it's, I was just jumping down, it's a pump. And the amount of $14,622. So that's...
That's not a par bet.
Doesn't require a lot of dollars. So that's what we do at Ways and Means, so thank you very much. Any questions? We'll move on to public safety.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Public Safety Committee met on Monday, June 26th. I was not in attendance. It was a special meeting, and they announced we approved the Seal Kids Swim, which we talked about earlier, and was approved in the special city council meeting earlier this month. That's all I have.
Marvelous.
Moving along.
Whoa, somebody have them on the clock?
Who can beat it?
Public Works, please.
The Public Works met on Monday, which was yesterday, at 11:00 a.m., and therefore, there are no minutes, but I've made the report from the audio, and thank you very much for posting the audio, otherwise there wouldn't be a report. Minutes were approved, there were no citizens' comments. We had the Director Pitts' report, in which he shared that the June miscellaneous was up 38 tons. The majority, the major priority for this month was the beach cleanup. Scooper serviced five times. Edies has completed its maintenance plan for the last year. The county completed asphalt over the cuts from Jaquim.
Joaquin.
Joaquin, Jaquim, Joaquin. DOT completed work on Palm and 25th. The yard debris is down, and some of that was because we had some maintenance issues on the trucks, so they weren't available. Donnie also forewarned us that we may need a Saturday shift to catch up. Garbage is flatlined from last year, and he ended up this year in the black on his vehicle maintenance. Kudos, John. We've already talked about the MPDS project update with the change order. We had discussion about the city compactor that sits behind the Dinghy, and the current location and condition of that area has created health hazard with rats and debris, and besides the businesses putting their trash in that compactor, you can find anything from TVs and mattresses and whatever else that they can find. Yeah. So Brett Jones of the Dinghy presented a plan to the committee to relocate the compactor with the possibility of some additional income from parking spaces. We had a lot of discussion on what to do about the current location and to make it better. We, several ideas, all included significant staff and cost for the city. A motion was made to approve further exploration regarding the compactor situation. An amendment to the motion was introduced to include a comprehensive study of the current site and whatever alternatives there might be. The amendment and the motion with that amendment passed unanimously, so we look forward to the study being done. In addition, Councilman Kinghorn asked Director Pitts and staff to come back next month with a maintenance plan to improve the current situation while the comprehensive study is being done, because we wanted something happening right away, because a comprehensive study is going to take several months to do. The drainage on Hartnett between 29th to 30th, the citizens in that area do not want to reopen the ditch, which is the swell ditch, which originally was there and is just filled in. Unless the city is willing to pay to have evaluation and design, et cetera, et cetera, that would have to go into our next year's budget because it would be extensive and costly. We know that this is not what the citizens want to hear, but they don't want the solution that's available, and that is to open that swell ditch. They just don't want that to happen. We will keep it on the agenda and look to see if there's any other alternatives. Under new business, we had a motion to add to the agenda that the Edies truck parking on DOT property at the Harris Teeter parking area had received some complaints. To be good neighbors, Public Works is arranging alternative parking for those Edies trucks. The whole project should be finished by the end of July, so it's not going to be a long-term parking wherever it is. An observation by Councilman Kinghorn said that the Public Works' agenda tilted to oversight versus policy, so I'm going to discuss this with the city administrator going forward. We also had a discussion of attendance at Waterworks Commission meetings going forward, and after a discussion of the pros and cons and historical attendance, a motion was made for a member of the Public Works to attend the monthly Water Commission meetings. The motion failed, with Councilmember Kinghorn voting in the affirmative, and Councilmembers Ward and Ferens voting in the negative. There was a motion to adjourn. Next meeting is August 2nd at 11:00 a.m. I will note that Mary Servos, which is a citizen of our island, made comments, and we, she had missed the citizen comment portion, but she had some real concerns about dumping on 5th Avenue. So we asked her to return to the August meeting so that her concerns could be put on record, and that was our meeting.
Thank you. I know Donnie's aware of that dumping, it's a beach access at 5th Avenue.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's really a public safety matter. It's a matter of somebody's got to catch them in the act. Can you put that on your notice and discuss it with the chief or something? It's just by fortune that you find somebody that's dumping, and they're pretty dumb if they're dumping while we have a public service safety officer there, but it could happen. I don't know how to catch them otherwise, unless...
I found that people, you know, we can put anything out, right, if I want to get rid of a mattress or whatever, but they don't want it in front of their house.
Their house, oh, yeah.
So it could be one of the homeowners right there.
Which she told us that someone, somebody pulls...
Oh, really?
Somebody pulls up with a truck.
Oh, is that right?
And dumps the stuff on a truck, so it may be, it may be from Carolina.
Yeah, there it goes. Some Carolina folks.
Well, that would be, it's that sort of stuff, she needs to, you know, if she's there watching it, she could get us some more information. Okay, we had no rec committee meeting, but do they have anything to say?
All is good at the rec.
Oh, that's the records.
Personnel committee had no meeting, but do they have anything to say?
Yes, we'd like to recognize the safety sweepstake winners, Recreation Department, Holly Norton, Fire Department, was Captain J.T. Hall, Police Department, was Captain Jeff Swain, and Public Works, was Joe Washington. As far as personnel needs, we still, we're in the middle of our summer, but we still are lacking five BSO officers. My understanding is that they have some in the pipeline. And we still have one part-time animal control officer that we need to get, and one building department building licensed clerk to take effect August 31st. And that completes my report.
Wouldn't that be June safety sweepstake?
No, they didn't have one in June.
Okay.
Question?
No meeting in July, that's a good point.
Mr. Mayor, five BSO officers, and now we're on the downside of the season. I mean, do we really need to fill all five?
Well, I asked the chief about that. I said, "How have we been doing without them?" And he said, "Well, a lot of, you know, it's just been a lot of extra effort." And quite frankly, we're probably missing some violations because we don't have the manpower. I don't think that they're going to even attempt to get all five, but they certainly are understaffed, and we probably are missing some violating, you know, people violating the ordinance.
And I just want to offer that I do receive complaints from citizens about parking on some of the residential streets. So, you know, it is correct that because of the staffing limitations that we have now, we are missing some enforcement that residents are wanting to see enforced because it's taking away parking that they would utilize, that the visitors are parking in those spaces.
What I, additional comments that the chief made to me is that it's just really tough in law enforcement in this climate, and certainly with the high, or low, I should say, unemployment rate, that it's just he, they're just not getting the applications because it is part-time.
But you realize that if they hire somebody now, they'll only be with us a few months. And it's like, I would consider if somebody hired now as a feeder for next year, because we have very few that carried over from last year. So if we could have a feeder system that, but, don't know.
Thank you.
All right, Real Property, please.
Yes, Real Property meeting was called order July 18th, which is today, with all committee members present. It was a challenge, again, no minutes, and my Wi-Fi went out mid-listening to the meeting, so bear with me. Under tenants' comments, Brian Barrigan has shared some of the work that he's been, that's been going on at the Marina. He's got a new golf cart and bike parking, more golf carts than ever are being parked, and as well as a bike corral. They've also put up a small playground that the kids are enjoying. The Marina has been taking part in, they adopt a highway clean waterway boulevard and has received an award from SDOT for their efforts. They've redone the deck on the side of the Marina and allowing more seating in the shade, and improved ice machine, which allows availability of apparently very good ice 24/7. and improved ice machine, which allows availability of apparently very good ice 24/7. The Marina is taking part in the strawless summer, and is converting all of their paper goods from styrofoam containers to all paper, which kudos to them. Morgan Creek is also taking part in the strawless summer campaign. This will help protect our environment, and hopefully draw attention to how important our fragile waterfront is, and hopefully it will inspire everyone to be more careful about polluting. Title Wave has also put up a new bike rack, and is converting all their goods to paper, all their containers and bags to paper also. I think all of the Marina tenants have made a point of being good island citizens. One great example is Title Wave being called by the Coast Guard to help with a rescue, and actually ended up being the first ones on site to make the rescue. Interestingly enough, over the years, Title Wave has been involved in dozens, oh my, no battery, that'll be bad, in dozens of water rescues. They've been willing to jump in and help whenever they can, being first on the scene 32 times. Oh, you're going to plug me in?
Yeah.
Maybe I can make it. Okay. Bing. Under old business, we discussed the public restrooms, and the bid will be opened on August 3rd at 2:00 p.m. ATM presented the last iteration of the Marina Plan, which you've all received, I think some paper copies and on email. In the new plan, the current Title Wave dock will become the city dock, which will give access to the water for kayaks and paddleboards, as well as area for people just to enjoy the waterway. There have been changes made to parking because of this, and again, you can look at the drawing. Also, the path entrance from the entrance of the Marina to the city dock area is going to be paved instead of gravel. Cost changes also, you've received a sheet on that. Under new business, this is where my Wi-Fi went out. We, we were visited by Dr. Ellis from University of South Carolina, and she's doing a dunes, Beach Dunes Recovery Project, which is a PhD project for some of her students, I believe. They want to place small signs at a few of our beach access numbers that would alert visitors going to the beach to snap a picture of a sign, of the sign from the beach and email it to them. They, they plan on hopefully getting lots of input where they wouldn't have the manpower to be covering every day of the week, every week of the year, and this all, all of that.
What if they?
They, they want to see how the dune is recovering.
So you take a picture of the dune?
Well, if you take, if I take one every time I go out there, I'm going to see erosion or accretion.
And, and they're using the, the distance between the holes in the sign, because they know that distance.
They have sophisticated equipment to do that.
Really?
But anyway.
Unsophisticated photographers.
Well, we'll see, yeah. It'll, okay, where am I? Dr. Ellis and her student would be doing all of the work, and will be willing to give the community a report of the results at the rec center. Dr. Ellis has many years' experience with dune and beach research. We voted unanimously to let them go ahead with this.
Which you would need to perhaps make a motion now for council's endorsement of this project.
So I'd like to make a motion to endorse Dr. Ellis and University of South Carolina's dune.
Is this another sign post?
No, 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 no. This is going to be, you know, six. You know, then under that, there's going to be a sign that they are going to have us approve before they do.
Get involved in science.
Say, get involved in science, become a, you know, citizen scientist. Take a picture of what the dune looks like today, and just email it to them. So.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Barbara, I, I listened to your tape, and one of the concerns was whether it would be a tacit invitation for people to actually walk on the dunes to make that picture. And I think she, she alerted that she hadn't thought about that, but she didn't think that would happen, because it would be in front.
Well, that's not what they're asking for. They're asking for you to, when you're walking out the path, turn around, look at the dune. Nothing to do with crawling at it, because the object is to get a sort of semi-distance picture of the path six sign.
But your, your back would have to be.
To the ocean.
Like a selfie.
No, 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 no. You don't have, you're not in the picture.
Looking at the sign.
You're just looking at the sign. No selfies.
That's what she's going to end up getting, you are.
But it's just, it's just, it's a, it's a PhD study. They're very enthusiastic and very, you know, sincere, and it is no, no harm to us.
And they will want to have a community.
And they want to have a community meeting to let the citizens have an idea of what's happening.
So they're going to tell us the dunes keep changing shape?
That's right.
Yes.
Don't go, we don't go.
He's quick. I just, she is a coastal physicist, isn't that what she said?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
She used to work for NASA.
Very impressive, right? She worked for NASA, she was very impressive.
She wants this.
No, this isn't the only, this isn't the only part of their, their, they're going out with all sorts of, in fact, one of her students is a guy from, that we use in our...
One of his, one of the employees of Coastal Science and Engineering was one of her students.
Yeah.
Y'all have really tickled the mayor here.
Oh, man.
Just, I want to see no selfies of you. I'm a teacher in 57.
Okay.
And, and they will create a story map as, as part of this work product, which might be an interesting thing for us to see.
And she's willing to come and, and do a report to the citizens about her line.
I would, I would propose something else. Why don't we get a drone?
I'm all for drones. Let's get one.
And fly it, fly it down over the, over the dune structures.
Nice. All of the liability of that.
No, over the dunes.
Oh, okay.
At a prescribed height. We do it, we do it monthly, or something like that.
I'll be in charge of that.
Can we, can we get a, I wonder if we can get it funded?
Maybe you can put it on Title Wave's thing. Get a camera up there.
Mr. Mayor, if I understood her correctly, the whole idea is to get the people involved in science.
Right. So they're, they're, they're part of the scientists. Themselves over, like, taking care of the dunes or the beach and all that stuff.
All right.
Okay, so the committee made a motion, and we passed it unanimously, and now we've made a motion here.
Second.
I, I really have trouble with this, as you can tell. Any further discussion, any more explanation? All in favor of allowing them to put a sign and take, allow us?
They're thinking about six, I mean, six paths.
Six beach access.
No, it wasn't even that many.
Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I, I don't like it, but I'm not going to stand in the way of it.
Don't stand in the way of science.
I know, but I don't, I'm sure this is science.
A coastal physicist.
I'm still going. Okay. All tenants' rooms are current, and our next meeting is Thursday, Aug., August.
We changed it.
We changed it, at 2:00.
Third.
The third.
Two o'clock.
2:00 p.m., 3rd of August upstairs.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Real Property?
Are we going to just talk about the Marina Plan and the costs?
Sure, let's go for it. You have, you have received, I guess that's what, in front of us here.
Yes.
I'm assuming, the new graphic. Has everybody got one?
Yeah, I think everyone had one at their space, right?
Yes, well, we passed it around.
The only way to know what has changed is, of course, to know what was there before, other than the fact that this clearly shows that they have Title Wave sports moved to the...
The communal dock from...
Yeah, the city, I call it the city dock, but.
From Brian's and Morgan Creek.
There's a cost estimate table that you received also. Five million or something.
On this iteration, then, we're, we're going to kind of renovate the existing water sports
dock to be the city dock.
Correct.
Now that looks light.
Paddleboard access and kayak access.
Right. That light colored, is that going to be covered? Is there going to be shade?
No. Well, we're talking about that, that we need to put some shade. That is the, that's the kayak launch, that little square on the end.
Okay. But there's no...
Not right now, but we talked about that today to look into that.
Okay, that's one of the things. Okay, so then you move the Title Wave water sports to the other dock.
Correct.
And that, that square with the X in it, is that a...
That's their hut?
That's their hut.
Are we required to build them a hut?
They have a hut now.
I know they do, but are we, as the city, required to build them a hut? Or are we just required to give them?
Space.
The space.
Well, I, I guess it's whether we're looking to make them fail or succeed. I mean, they have to have a hut for their computer, for their, you know, transaction.
Where's the hut for the coastal expeditions?
They don't need one.
They use the, they use your trailer.
Okay, so they have a trailer that they put...
Well, no, we don't have, we're not...
It's not.
Where are they going to put the trailer? That's, well, that was what I was going to say. Where's the trailer going on the parking place?
I, there's no trailer. I mean, we're not talking to a trailer. We have not talked about a trailer for coastal expedition.
So they don't have an office, and they won't have the trailer.
Well, they're doing it right now. How are they doing it now? They don't have the trailer.
They have a trailer.
They have a little silver trailer.
It's right there.
That got thrown out by you.
No, 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 no.
No, no, no. They got under the...
It's still there.
So my question is, if we don't, if we're not going to provide it for coastal expeditions, why do we have to provide it for water sports?
Something that can be decided. I mean, you know, I guess we're replicating basically what they have now.
But that's a big number.
Again, I guess, you know, it's, do we want them to fail or succeed?
Why would they fail?
Well, if they have no ways to do business. Where, how are they going to sign people up? How are they going to take reservations? How are they going to get people, get their jackets on and all that stuff if they have no hut? I mean, they can sit on the, with their iPad on the, on the pier?
I'm just asking the question.
The same question applies to coastal expeditions.
Well, yeah. Well, and that's, I, you know, the trailer hasn't been included in any of this.
It shouldn't be a trailer.
There can't be a trailer. So if they have found a way to do business without a hut...
Well, no, they have a trailer.
But they won't have a trailer in this plan.
Well, they don't know that yet. Right? I mean, we haven't discussed that at all about them. You know, the thing is, this is a plan, and it's not, you know, chiseled in stone. I mean, we're not going to vote against the referendum.
But this is what's going to be before the residents or the referendum.
Yeah, and it's going to be, it's going to be a plan. I mean, like you're saying, maybe we need to put something for coastal expeditions. We're not going to say, oh, no, it's not on the plan, we can't do it.
But you have a cap of $5.5 million.
Well, right.
I mean, and, and it's already now $5 million in expenses. And if you, you know, you look at what overruns have been on, on all our other projects...
Well, this includes the contingency, doesn't it?
Yes.
Yes.
But our contingencies have been overrun. But what I'm saying is, I just think that, I, I question if it's in, is it in the lease that we must provide them?
That's a very good question.
That's a good question, I have to go back and check.
Yeah, it's a very good question.
If it's in their lease, I can understand that. But if it's not in their lease, I don't understand why we have to do it for one and not for the other. And I don't say you do it for both. Coastal expeditions is not our tenant.
Well, no, coastal expeditions is not our tenant. So I would take that up with Brian, how would they do that thing? These people are our tenant, and they have had a hut. Now you want to take it away from them after removing them, I guess that's a decision we can make. But again, let's look at the lease.
Well, I think it's the lease and also financial responsibilities. I mean, how much more are we going to up this thing? We only have $500,000 leeway now. We were at five...
Four eight.
Four eight, now we're at five. I just say, you know, be careful in terms of all these things that we're adding. The other thing is, how many spaces, car spaces, does coastal expeditions and water sports require for their, for their customers?
Coastal expeditions, again, that would be under Brian, we have nothing to do with that.
But how many parking, I mean, in this plan, you've, you've got 45 parking spaces and 35 car parking spaces on that side, and what I'm saying is, what I'm trying to understand is how many of those car spaces are going to be taken up by...
Well, how many are in their lease? That's how many?
Right.
We're, we're, it's in their lease, how many parking spaces?
Okay, so we do know what that is, so we're going to say, okay.
Right, and it's just moved down a bit. Where we've got parking now for golf carts down by the city dock and cars, that's where that parking would have been, and now it's just, it would be moved over.
How many parking places are from Morgan Creek? I only see nine?
Well, they got, this is, it's the whole center thing, isn't it? I mean...
It's the 40, it's all 45.
Right.
But so we've got Morgan Creek and all of these commercial marine things.
Right.
And we only have 80 parking places, is that right?
I don't know what you're adding up.
Eighty-nine. I'm just questioning, is there enough parking places for people to be able to...
Well, there's more than there are now.
Okay.
That's, that's sort of the bottom end, that's safer and organized.
But we have added a city parking, a city dock, so people are going to have to either have golf cart spaces, which are seven. I'm just saying, we're looking at all of these spaces.
Over here, there's 19.
Nine, 10. There's 10 plus a handicap in that area.
There's 19 golf cart spaces.
So ATM is saying that these number of spaces should be able to accommodate all of what we've got on those docks.
Right.
Yes.
Plus the restaurant.
Yes.
Should I take include 27th Avenue?
27th, yeah.
Where we're taking cars and parking down there?
Well, that's employee. That's employee.
But what happens when the fall comes, and we start having baseball games and soccer games?
Nothing, you know, in theory, in fall, the marina's not going to be that busy, so it's not going to be that. But again, nothing to do with this plan. I mean, employing parking is an issue, but unless we're going to get rid of Morgan Creek Grill too, then we won't have an employing parking problem, but we'll still have the Marina, and we don't want to do that, that's not the object. This improves the parking, makes it safer, it gives us more boat and trailer parking, more car parking, more bicycles, more golf carts.
Pedestrian access.
Pedestrian access, bike paths.
It's organized.
And, and, you know, look at what it's like now. I'd like to have an overlay of what it's like now and have this flip over.
A story map.
A story map.
Well, I commend the committee for, you know, being so tenacious in, in trying to bring something that was better than what we have, and better than some of the other plans we have. I'm just thinking that, you know, there's some detail in here that the, I don't want the referendum to not pass, because there are questions here that are not clear to the residents.
Right, and that's up to us to, you know, for the ATM to answer.
It's, and this is still a work in process. It'll be, even after it's approved, we'll, we'll still be making changes. Carol, please.
It's just, you know, we, it's, it's such a give and take process, and it's so much about compromise, and no, and not everybody's going to be happy. It's just, it really is a difficult thing. I do think the city dock is such a wonderful, wonderful asset, that we can just be so excited to tell people that we're doing. And, and the ADA gangway, you know, it's going to have to be adjusted, which I didn't really realize until Kirby said today how much we have to adjust it because of the ADA compliance and, you know, and so we do need to get a roof structure. I mean, I think that is so important, I said that today, that is just critical to have some shade down there for people to sit and enjoy it. But I think that's something that people can really get, they're just excited about. And we've got to organize the chaos that's the parking situation down there. I mean, it is dangerous, and we're just lucky nothing's happened today, because it's crazy. I mean, there's just total chaos.
So you guys are going to continue to work on this, and we're going to...
Yep.
Every day.
I know you will, girl. Nobody's got any of those.
Nobody's got anything.
They're all still in process.
The zoning?
This was an early.
You got more to zoning appeals.
I read zoning.
More to zoning appeals in your package.
I read zoning.
It's easy to read.
Unless I dreamed it.
No, it's there.
Okay.
No questions there. At least I don't see any. We've already dealt with the bills in possession. I have nothing else on my agenda.
The farmer's market resolution.
Okay, oh, I have the old.
Yeah, there you go.
I have the old one.
Excuse me, we have a resolution authorizing the farmer's market for 2017 season. Should we suspend the reading, or is there something?
Well, I actually would prefer to read it because we're making some decisions via this resolution. And so if there are any components of this that you guys would wish to change before it's voted on, I would, we need to hear that now before we go forward. So.
Please read it.
Okay. Whereas City Council, the City of Alapams, appointed an ad hoc farmer's market citizen committee to research the feasibility of holding a seasonal farmer's market on the island. And whereas the committee's recommendation to City Council is to hold the farmer's market in 2017 at the county park, 114th Avenue, Alapams, with the assistance of Charleston County Parks and Recreation Commission, as detailed in an agreement to be executed between the city and Charleston County Parks Recreation Commission. Whereas City Council voted unanimously to grant city-sponsored event status to the proposed 2017 farmer's market event to be held at the county park, and the city administrator was, has executed the agreement between the city and Charleston County PRC. And whereas the City of Alapams desires to conduct the 2017 farmer's market on Thursdays beginning August 31st through August 20th, I mean, October 26th, between the hours of 4:00 p.m. and 7:00 p.m., weather permitting. And whereas the City of Alapams will require vendor fees, including a fee of $145 per season or $20 per week for vendor space and an administrative fee of $25 per season, which administrative fee shall be waived for vendors who currently hold a City of Alapams business license. And whereas the City of Alapams will provide parking free of charge in the city-owned parking lots to all patrons of the farmer's market between 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. on Thursdays between August 31st and October 26th. And whereas the City Council finds that a farmer's market will benefit the community, residents, businesses, and visitors of the City of Alapams by providing a variety of goods and services from various local vendors. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Mayor and City Council of City of Alapams, South Carolina, as follows. One, that the 2017 farmer's market hereby authorized to be conducted in accordance with the dates and times and other conditions set forth in this resolution, and in accordance with the terms and agreement between Charleston County Parks and Recreation Commission and the City of Alapams, that the city administrator is hereby authorized to appoint a farmer's market manager and assign city staff as necessary for the management, implementation, and marketing of the 2017 farmer's market, to promulgate and enforce rules and regulations for the operation of the 2017 farmer's market, and to execute any and all required documents necessary for the implementation of the 2017 farmer's market. That the conditions set forth in this resolution and any rules and regulations concerning the 2017 farmer's market shall be subject to review and approval of City Council and may be amended at any time by City Council, passed and approved by City Council, City of Alapams, South Carolina, on the 18th day of July 2017.
So moved.
Question.
Here we go.
Assigning a farmer's market manager, is that a paid position?
Amen. Not, not now.
The funds that are being collected for the farmer's market, how are they to be spent?
Those, those funds are going to be, those revenues will be collected through the business license office, and we're expecting that the expenditures will need to go towards providing music at the events.
Okay, so there, there's no other expenses. I mean, all, all these funds are gonna pass for the city, right?
Correct.
The city collects them, the city pays the bills. What if?
We don't think there'll be any left over.
No, the other way around. What happens if there are expenses that are not covered by the entity? I think that, if you don't mind if I respond.
Yeah, please.
I think that one of the reasons this inaugural year is so important is that it does allow us to collect the data on, oh, we are gonna have some expenses, like insurance can be an expense, things of that nature, and also the investment that it requires in staff time. So, you know, we perhaps do not know all of those answers at this time, and it's, it seems to me that council, in their prior actions, has affirmed that they wish to do this community service. So we will be providing that data so that really at the end of this season on our after action, so that for the potential for the future, you can have a real budget with, you know, knowing what it would cost.
However, we can all.
We are prepared to take the shortfall.
Yeah, it's not gonna mean, it's just a trial, you know?
And if the 1st of October, we realize that there aren't enough vendors available because of the times, you know, whatever, then we can suspend having a farmer's market for October.
I don't like the marina. A work in progress.
Every day.
Just so you know, just so that you know, the committee that worked on this tailored their, their planning out of Sullivan's Island, we're coming right after them. The insurance is being covered by the Parks and Rec, and I agree.
That's not accurate. Parks and Rec is not, Parks and Recreation Commission is not covering the insurance.
For the vendors, they're not?
No.